Social with the nursing home?
Anyway.
We did. We let him out of a vault, man.
How's it going, Keith?
Hey Keith, what's going on? He said you got your shirt on black.
They say Reggie Lucas.
Now you don't know what side it is.
Terry.
Is it in or out?
Oh, yeah, okay. Now I know we all talking about.
Hey, man. What's happening, brother?
Hey, Terry. Don, what he's up to? Terry. You, Mr. Lynn a hundred, Mr. Ricky a hundred. Nice job. The same.
Don't share nothing fun.
For what? You said he wasn't going to come today.
Yes.
I know. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to introduce, this is Mr. Keith Lacoste. Hey, if you ever need a friend, just, you, you have my number. Yeah, pay up the hundred bucks.
I've been helping him for...
Twenty-two minutes. Oh, Miss Karen, that's Keith.
Keith. Nice to meet you.
We're gonna get rid of that. Well, we was, we was taking dibs to see if you were coming or not. You was late. I'm so ashamed to do stuff like that. And it was his fault.
They from Des Moines originally, him and his brother.
But, yeah, you know, you should have told him where he was coming today. Cause I seen, I seen Escalade, I seen...
Yeah, I thought there, I had two to read, two to keep, because it's not too Saturday. And then, I got some of, while I was during the program, when I did, and I went back to check, there was two more, "Hey, how's it going?" "Doing great." "What you ready for? Are you ready to roll today?"
All right.
Oh, yeah, I know, let's roll somewhere. Look, the lock's red, start your dress. Get it, get it, get it.
Oh, I want, I wanna find where they is. Both men, how?
Okay, you're here today with your sister, I call her. Yes!
I tell you what, you could, you could it one day and the next day...
Hey, can't let any old man in here. Look, and you got the cra- it's any old man. If you do, I can't move. Great, good, doing thongs, Terry, doing real good, huh? Thongs, still, yeah, yeah. How's mom and dad?
They good.
Tell me what I said.
That's still, you'll find, at the office every day.
I'm, I need to stop by.
And he doesn't leave early.
Oh, there's no danger. He probably there before y'all.
Oh, he's there before everybody, I tell you. In fact, he'll be there six hours prior to his birthday.
That's always, it's usually, it's usual.
That's what he does.
Yeah, I see. You know, he talk, when he turn eighty, dad's gonna be eighty-four, he said. When he was gonna turn eighty, he says, "All right, mama makes me retire." Talked about it a lot. Two weeks before he turned eighty, he said, "I'm gonna retire." He didn't even retire.
There you go.
Just the thought of it.
Which is, yes, let him go as long as he can, man.
I agree. Watch, when you watch him do it, it's not work, he is...
Yeah. That's how you gotta be.
It's good seeing you, Mr. Terry.
Nice to see you too. She didn't wanna turn it on yet.
As long as he's gonna turn it down.
I know, that's what I told her, the best. Rick did turn it on. Well, yeah, that's what I told her, I said, "This was like turn on."
Hey, you should the next day.
Hmm?
You should the next day. I was so scared. Mr. Derrick's the next year.
He might be. He might be, I mean, look at this dude. Okay, what I gotta do right here? Hey, going camping? You going camping? What I gotta do? Press X? Everything's on, everything's on. Ma'am, we're ready for your dress? You ready for you to address this? These people ain't shit.
All right, it's, uh, Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, five P.M. Uh, regular board meeting of the Volksparish School Board will come to Horne. First item's gonna be the invitation by Mr. Dexter, and second item is the pledge allegiance by Mr. Keith.
Dear Lord, we thank you for the gift of life, thank you for the gift of this day. Thank you for this school system, Lord, and this community. Uh, and Lord, now we pray your blessings upon this board, that they would make decisions that are of the utmost benefit to those who will serve by and to the greatest degree of glory unto you. Give them wisdom, knowledge, understanding, Lord God, that the decisions made will best serve, uh, this system in its entirety. Bless all those who labor therein, and may the work of our hands, uh, be effective, efficient, and profitable. We ask these blessings now in the name of Jesus, my Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one unity, and indivisible, in the name of our Lord and our King.
All right, item number three, recommendation to approve the adoption of the minutes of the regular board meeting held Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, as printed and mailed to the board members and published in the Weekly News. Official journal of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I so knew that we adopt the minutes.
That's it. Got a motion by Mr. Robin and a second by Mr. Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Recommendation approved. Item number four, it's an action item, it's a resolution of respect to the late Rodney Philip Dufour, retired teacher. Mr. Robin?
Whereas God in his infinite wisdom has called whose eternal resting place Rodney Philip Dufour, retired teacher. And whereas Mr. Rodney Philip Dufour has dedicated twenty-one years of service to the education system. Mr. Duceford received his Bachelor of Science in the College of Biomedical, Biological, Mathematical, and Physical Sciences with a major in Free Med Technology in nineteen seventy-five from the University of Southwestern Louisiana. Whereas Mr. Dufour was a U.S. Naval, Navy veteran, serving with the first Marine Air Wing in Da Nang during the Vietnam conflict as a Navy corpsman. He was awarded the Navy Air Medal with striped flights for medevac flights. Upon his return, he became a medical technologist and later began his teaching career at Marksville High School from nineteen ninety through nineteen ninety-two. Monkey High School from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand and five, La Sase from two thousand and five until his retirement on March, in March of two thousand and eleven. Whereas this board feels that his passing to his eternal reward should be noted at this time in recognition of the unselfish service he rendered to the cause of public education for so many years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Volksparish School Board expresses its sincere regret in the loss of this beloved former employee. And it, and be it further resolved that the resolution be spread upon official minutes of the Volksparish School Board, and that a copy be transmitted to his family, and I salute.
Got a motion by Mr. Robin, a second by Mr. Jew, to, uh, adopt a resolution of respect. Any comments in the audience?
Yeah, I just, I wanna say one thing. Uh, I worked with Mr. Dufour, both at Monkey and at La Sase, he and his wife Suzette, and they were, they were very good people and, uh, very intelligent people.
Mr. Rick, I, I worked with him, I had all of his kids at four H when I was a four H agent here in the parish, and he was very instrumental in helping us. He was a good four H teacher, he was a good teacher, he was a good teacher.
I, uh, went to school with his children, I missed him by a year, uh, but there's a lot of professionals in this parish that were taught by Mr. and Mrs. Dufour. Uh, they produce a lot of doctors and engineers and so on and so forth from their classrooms. Phenomenal people and phenomenal teachers.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution of respect, Terry. Information items. Number five, two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six, Back to School Bash, is pending.
So, um, our Back to School Bash, we're doing something a little different. Remember how we would normally have the parent expo at the casino, and we would have it late January, early February? We took people's input about it, and a lot of people said we should have it at the beginning of school, which makes sense. So this year, we're doing that. Uh, July the fourteenth, which is a Monday, it will be at a Boils High School, outside, under the trees of Boils High. All in, uh, focusing around that walking track. So all of our schools will be there promoting clubs, activities, programs that they have at their schools. Um, it's gonna start at three-thirty and end at seven-thirty. We'll give, uh, hot dogs and chips and water. Uh, our high schools are gonna bring their bands, cheerleaders, football teams, and each of them have a time slot to perform and showcase their talent of the school for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And we did reach out to some community members. We have, um, the Boils Community Youth Coalition coming, the Tunica Biloxi Education Department, Moving Monkey Forward, a Boils Early Childhood Network, Christus Health, and a Boils Hospital's gonna bring their mobile clinic. And so, we're trying. I'm, I'm not gonna say who recommended that it be outside.
It's cool out there in the evening, we can out the sun.
She exposed herself. So, um, it'll be outside, we'll have fans, we'll have water, and we'll have a good time. So again, that's July the fourteenth, it's on a Monday, at a Boils High, from, uh, and we'll showcase some of our new buses, and then some of our rad buses. And so, uh, it'll be a way for parents to come, learn what time school starts, what bus route my, my student, uh, their uniform supply list, we have some school supplies we're gonna give. So it'll just be a good time.
Question, how are we advertising this to the students?
So, Annie's posting it on Facebook after our meeting tonight. Um, we're, I'm not sure, we could do J calls.
We have that plan.
We have, we have J calls, we have a whole P R campaign that we're gonna, that we're gonna send out.
If other organizations want to participate, do they contact you, or do they not allow you?
No, we send it out to every partner that we have in our list. And then we ask principals, and we ask other people to send it to their partner. And so, if there's just a little form, I think y'all got it in the newsletter.
Yeah, I saw that, I would.
Yeah, there's a little form, and it comes back to back.
There's like a letter of intent where we talk about, you know, where we'll put you, what time is set up, things like that, with being willing to participate. So we're hoping it'll be a great place.
She just needs to know ahead of time, cause she is mapping everybody's spots.
Thanks, Ms. Lynn.
All right.
Appreciate it, Inspector. Item number six, partnership using the mobile unit, Mr. Tim?
Yeah, thank you all, uh, thank you all for having me. Uh, you know, we're super excited to be a part of the Back to School Bash, that's something we could definitely, uh, do is just have the, uh, the bus there, along with some maybe nurses or something like that, in case someone's dehydrated or whatever. Uh, but to more so get to the reason, I told, you know, Miss Karen, I'd keep it within five minutes, cause I know everybody's with a tight, uh, time crutch here, but I wanted to, uh, kinda show off our bus. I know we've been working for a long time with many of y'all on, uh, you know, being able to do these annual wellness visits, I kinda touched on it, uh, in our last meeting when we were briefly talking about freedom behavioral. Uh, but it's something that we're gonna be able to provide to our community, all the schools, being able to bring healthcare to those schools, not only being able to do those mental health screenings, uh, but also the, uh, annual wellness checkups as well. Uh, all those folks that would be licensed practitioners, either nurse practitioners or M Ds, that would be performing those, uh, exams. So I'm gonna just kinda briefly go do a little slideshow that I do have. Uh, so basically, what a Boils Hospital would like to do is, uh, you know, provide those consent forms, Jay, you and I were briefly talking about it earlier, would like to include that into the Back to School packet. Uh, for each student, that way the, the family member can either, uh, or their guardian can either accept or decline that wellness visit, basically giving us consent to, uh, to do that exam. Uh, they will have, like I said, they'll have the, uh, the right to elect or decline either of the two, whether they wanna just do the mental part, or if they wanna do, uh, both, or if they would just like to do the, the mental part, I mean, the, the health part as well. Um, our team will basic, basically coordinate with the school board on, you know, what schools we'll be going to, so like, for example, if we're going over to Cottonport, we'll basically take the bus over there, make sure everything's set up with, uh, supply, everything, uh, with the providers and all that. And we'll, you know, coordinate that with the staff, basically do, do, do it during the elective time period, which will mainly primarily be, uh, you know, P E, we don't want them missing, you know, English, math, all those type, uh, core subjects. So we'll go over there, with, you know, my thing is I wanna be able to provide a good quality visit to these kids, I don't wanna run a hundred and twenty kids through there in an hour. So what we may do is we may split it up, depending on how many kids we truly have, if it is, let's just say, you know, ninety kids, we may split it up into three different days, uh, three different, whether it be a Thursday or Wednesday, we'll just break it out over, you know, three week period, and we may do thirty kids a day type deal, to make sure we do it, provide a good quality, uh, exam. Um, let's see, uh, the follow-ups and support, so basically what we'll do is a part of that consent packet would give us parent guardians, uh, information, so after the visit, we'll, as the hospital or as the clinic, be able to relay that information and any abnormal findings, you name it, to the parents directly. Uh, if there's any follow-ups or anything like that, they'll have to come, you know, to our clinic, but it's more so establishing that relationship, right? Uh, being able to, you know, have that face-to-face visit with that provider, or have that conversation between the guardian and the provider, uh, and have them follow up with that provider there at our clinic. Also, we have six other health clinics throughout the parish, so like, let's say if someone lives close to, uh, Cottonport, you know, or someone lives close to Morville, or Hessmer, or Marksville, you name it, those, those kids can actually physically come to those clinics and, uh, be seen, and we have all their patient records and stuff. Or they can come to the pediatric clinic here at Marksville. Um, so no, no cost whatsoever, uh, for participation to the school board. Basically, what we'll do is, you know, all insurances, you know, allow you to have an annual wellness visit a year, we'll gather some of that information from the, uh, the parents and stuff like that, and we'll bill, bill it that way, and that's how we'll, uh, be reimbursed. Uh, you know, a couple of identifiers, uh, is that, you know, we'll be able to identify, you know, certain disorders at an early stage, which will allow us to be able to create a healthier, you know, parish, healthier state. A lot of places are already doing this, we're kind of a little bit, you know, late to the game, but it's, you know, now here we are, we've invested a lot into getting this, uh, you know, this mobile unit and these providers on board, and, uh, you know, we're here to, to try to start now and, and provide a good quality service. Uh, another thing is reduce absences, uh, for health-related issues, you know, if we can catch these things and be able to, uh, you know, identify certain things that will prevent them from missing a lot of school, and also just building a long-term relationship with those, uh, you know, those family members and the kids. Um, you can go to the next one, Miss Karen. This is just some statistics, um, you know, from a national trend, approximately one in four children in the U.S. do not receive annual wellness visits, so kind of a, a conversation we're having out there, this is CDC information, so one out of four, we're probably one out of eight, you know, here in the Boils Parish, or maybe one out of twelve. Uh, another thing is for, you know, we all know mental health is a big thing, but CDC also states that one out of five children in the U.S. experience a mental health disorder each year, and many of these, uh, conditions go without being identified, you know, and I know we, that's a conversation that many people have, is kids being disruptive in class, getting kicked out of class, and a lot of it's just because they've, uh, you know, never really had a screening, or never, uh, been put on medication, or may have things going at home that other people don't know about, and, uh, you know, the school is their outlet. And so, we wanna be able to be there for the kids and develop those relationships with them, to where we can help them, keep them in school, uh, keep them out of the streets, create good, uh, you know, jobs here, and, uh, you know, that's kind of what our mission is, and that's what we're going... and that's where we're going to play our part in, you know, conjunction with the school board and, you know, being able to put together a good program. So that's really all I had. Want to open it up for any questions? Comments?
Do, does your office have the ability to, if a child shows up and he needs, you know, to see an unprofessional, you know, of insurance, does your office have the ability to help them get medicated?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can help them apply for medicated mainly would come from a parent or guardian. But one thing that I'll do is I'll make sure that if a kid comes in without insurance, they'll be seen. I think that, you know, I'm a big believer in doing what's right in this parish. You hear me all the time in our little board meetings and stuff like that. I think it's, if you do what's right, it's all going to come back full circle and it'll all take care of itself on the back end. And, you know, then again, we're talking about kids here. So I want to make sure that those kids get the care that they need regardless if they have insurance or guardians. Other things is like, as far as vaccinations, one thing I didn't mention is we will not be providing vaccinations on this bus. We will not be doing sick notes on this bus. More so the reasoning for that is if we are treating a kid that's sick or we're getting a vaccine and they have any type of reaction and we're not there, that's just the liability, right? So what we will do is we'll do the wellness part at the schools. And then if those kids are doing any vaccines and they can go into any of our clinics, they can walk in, within fifteen minutes, they could be in and out with those vaccines and be up today. And same thing goes for those follow-up visits. I can't promise a fifteen-minute being seen, but we will be able to get them in and out.
Thank you.
Any other?
Only comment, thank you for taking care of our community.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you for taking the time and showing us the bus.
Very nice.
Absolutely. Like I said, for those that missed it, we'll be at the Back to School Bash. So y'all come take a tour and, you know, excited to continue to show it off. Anything we can do to help out, we want to be a part of it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Item number seven, sales tax report for the month of May two thousand forty-five. Ms. Jessica?
Item sales tax collections for the month of May total nine hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars and seven cents. This is twenty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-three cents more than the prior year, which is a two point six five percent increase. Our motor vehicles were down by five thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty-five cents. So it's down by three point two two percent, but that's in that total we have at the top. Overall, our collections are still up. We didn't have any audits for May, so that remains unchanged. Our calendar year-to-date for two thousand twenty-five collections total four million eight hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-five cents. This is a one point five one percent increase compared to two thousand twenty-four. In our fiscal year comparison, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we've collected ten million four hundred forty-four thousand three hundred one dollars and ninety-seven cents. And this is a point four six percent increase from last year to this year. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Jessica. Anybody have any question? Item number eight, monthly maintenance report on expenditures.
I didn't have any, any question, anything that stated mostly air conditioning, except other. I mean, we'll, we'll probably see more next month too with all the maintenance items that's going on. Anybody have any question?
Item number nine, monthly general fund, two thousand forty-four, twenty-five, year-to-date report with comparisons, Ms. Mayor?
Good evening. So we're going to go over the year-to-date comparisons. Okay, so the first item we see is the balance sheet. Total assets twenty-seven million seven forty-nine five hundred compared to last year, twenty-six seven fifty-nine three twenty-nine, an increase of about nine hundred ninety thousand dollars. And liability and on balance follows. Any questions on the balance sheet? And of course, we have timing issues, so those numbers may change next month, closing year out. Okay, and in the next section is the revenue and expenditure report as of May, I'm sorry, April thirtieth, twenty-five compared to twenty-four. Total revenues of thirty-nine four seventeen seven fifty-nine compared to last year, thirty-eight five seventeen four twenty-seven. Any questions on the revenues?
They're, they decreased just a little.
No, it's an increase, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Got any more here?
Let's, hey, where are you? There is, if you'll notice on other miscellaneous revenues in the middle of the first page, that difference of one million dollars, that's a refund. Remember last year, we had a refund on the grant, the bus grant where we deposited that money?
In the section sixteen line, that significantly went up.
It has increased about fifteen, twenty thousand. Any more questions? Okay, the next expenditures, current year thirty million four eighty-five four fifty compared to last year, thirty million three sixty-eight four sixty-seven. So pretty much in line. We still have a payroll for June, July, and August. Though actually, this is April, so you have May, June, July, and August payroll, but it's not in here. So it's like a four, a five-year that all happened in the last few months. Is that it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Item number ten, personnel changes. Ms. Kelly?
Okay, so you have a list of personnel changes that occurred in May and for beginning of the new school year. And also I wanted to say that majority of the schools are fully staff. I know you do see vacancies being advertised, but remember, we do have to advertise for vacancies for retirees returning to work for critical shortage. So, but they are working diligently to fill those vacant slots at their schools. So I would like to say congratulations to our principals.
Yeah, and I wanted to say that one more time. Something I've ever heard her say that in a meeting. It is G and we are all as full staff. It's awesome. Good job, good job. Good job, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, item number, items number eleven through twenty-one are all consent items?
The president, I moved that we approved the agenda items number eleven through twenty-one as granted. I'll second it.
Got a motion by Jill and a second. Got a motion by Ms. Amy and a second by Mr. Jay then. He's a, he's a second.
To pass items eleven through twenty-one consent items. Any discussion on it? Anybody got any question on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Items eleven through twenty-one passed. Item number twenty-two, action items. Recommendation to approve the insurance renewal presented by Blake Noel with First Insurance.
Good afternoon. Have y'all had an opportunity to review the proposal and anything with it? Were there any questions or anything that stood out?
Thank you for sending it somewhere, at least we could look at it.
Yeah, that's the goal, to try and give y'all, because we don't want to take too much time up here. But
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
It's obviously more than last year, but I think if we've all paid attention in our meetings with the claims that we had, we're lucky it's not a lot more than that. That's my opinion.
Yeah, so, and I appreciate you bringing that up. But this year, we were able to cut that expense down. When you're looking at it as a total, it only went up five thousand dollars. When you're talking about an account this size, that really is good, especially given today. The way that we were able to do that this year was through the property carrier. So the past few years, the property insurance has been getting really, really expensive in Louisiana. It's been going up a lot. It's the first time in a while that we've had some softening in that market. So this year, I was able to have eight carriers that wanted to compete on the account. In the past couple of years, nobody wanted to touch it. So that's just a sign that premiums kind of get to where it needs to be and we need insurance is working its way out. So on the property, a couple of things that changed on the property, it's with the same carrier. We reduced that premium on there by a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So that's huge and that's great for us. But a couple of things that also happened with it is this year, because we had so much competition with it and back and forth and negotiating, we were able to get them to increase their named windstorm coverage amount from five million to ten million. So they doubled that, which is very helpful. I always felt like we have a big deductible if it's related to a hurricane, but once we get through that, you know, five million I think would have done us well, but I feel much better about ten million. The other thing that they added in there is they threw in five million dollars of flood insurance for all property that is located in a preferred flood zone, which all of Louisiana's in a flood zone. There's high risk and then there's preferred zones. So that takes care of just about all the campuses for sure. You know, we would have to run to see what's not in, what's in a high-risk zone. But as long as it's in a preferred flood zone, if we get, if it's because of rain or the dams bust or whatever it is, we do have five million dollars of flood insurance for the policy. The property does come with a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars of property insurance. They do cap that loss limit at fifty million dollars per event because we don't expect to lose all hundred thirty-eight million. In the event of a hurricane or a named storm, like a tropical storm or a hurricane, you're going to look at a ten million dollar limit. So they take forty million off of there. The issue that I had and the concern that I had with this renewal is the casualty package. And as Jill pointed out, the claims have been, we've had some severity and we had some frequency issues. It's mostly coming down to two lines of insurance. The past couple of years, Liberty Mutual's been able to kind of bail us out on the high increase of premium. Couple of years ago, when we first roped y'all with Liberty Mutual, they were a hundred twenty thousand dollars cheaper than the nearest competitor, which was P C A when we were with them for like seventeen years. The past, this past year, we had a pretty rough renewal with them. You'll notice that the auto premium went up by seventy-five thousand this year, although our auto count dropped by a couple buses, six or so buses, seven buses. The general liability had a forty-three thousand dollar increase. That's the two lines of insurance that we're struggling with right now. On the general liability, we don't have a ton of frequency, although we have more than what you generally see on a general liability, but we're having severity problems. Like every claim we're getting on general liability is a hundred thousand to two hundred fifty thousand. And our loss ratio just on general liability is somewhere around two hundred percent. So that means for every dollar Liberty's collected, they've paid out two dollars. So they're going to start hitting us with that. The auto, we haven't had any type of severity with it yet, but we've had some frequency. And the auto is very challenging in Louisiana and it's very challenging on an account of this size. When you've got this many bus routes and you've got, you know, kids on there, if you're involved in any type of claim, we're going to, however many kids are on there, you're going to pick up quite a bit of claims. So some of the things that we're looking at doing, I brought it to Ms. Tudor's attention, is we've been assigned a new loss control trainer with, through Gallagher. And the guy's name is Tommy Norman. When I heard that, I'm like, Norman? I'm like, he must have some kind of ties to Boils Parish. Sure enough, when he reached out to me, he was like, hey, I'm a graduate of Simsport High School. Is he daddy Eddie Noah or whatever? We went through all that. But I was really excited about that because when you can get somebody from the parish involved here, it's like you're going to get a little bit of home cooking with it. And I sent him all of our losses to review. He reviewed them and we're going to get together with all the supervisors of each department and we're going to start an assessment of our policies and procedures, how well we are putting them in place, and like where we're backing up in a road if we bump somebody, or we're like where we're backing up in a road if we bump somebody or we're turning around and we're bumping somebody. So it's what we, we still, I had a bus, not this past school year, but the year before, trying to give roads, the room on a road slid into a ditch. Not much impact, but we got like nineteen or twenty lawsuits out of it if the bus was pulled. So we're trying to avoid those situations and it's a huge undertaking. And part of what we're going to do now, on this renewal, what concerned me the most this year is when I went out, every year when I go out, I flood the marketplace. And anybody that writes insurance in the state of Louisiana, I want to talk to them. Would you like to look at this account? Would you like to provide, take a shot at it? I get five, six, seven, eight people that want to look at it every year. They can't compete with Liberty Mutual. This is the first year that everybody declined a quote. They don't want to look at it for two reasons. The frequency on the auto and then normally your general liability is a line of insurance that performs well for insurance carriers. When it's not performing well, they get scared. So my goal is next year, when we go back out with this thing, I want to show them what we did to try and address that. And, go ahead.
Sorry. Do you think, once to you, do you think the fact that we have the cameras now, the tracking, do you think, obviously, it didn't work yet, but do you think in the next year or so, that hopefully it's up to lower our premiums?
It will. And I mean, I saw in, in the legislature this year, they had something, one of the bills passed, I think is where we can get a discount for like the GPS systems for commercial auto. So I think it's going to at least help us out there. I was happy to see that because it's going to encourage more entities to do that. But, you know, especially if you have the GPS stuff, the companies that I've seen that use the GPS system to its full ability, it changes drivers' behavior. Mostly what you're trying to do, one, if we're in an accident, we want to tell the story. Were we negligent? Did we really hurt people? We want to take care of those people. We want to fix them. What we don't want is the frivolous lawsuits of any sort and all the claims activity. But if we have bus drivers not doing what they're supposed to do and they're acting like they're unsupervised, we want to be able to catch that. And we want to get the best bus drivers and make sure that they're, they're handling that responsibility appropriately. So I think if we use the system like it is, I think it would definitely help out with that, with curbing the behavior. On top of that, what we're kind of staring down the barrel of here is, you know, ensuring public entity is really difficult because you're ensuring a commercial exposure and there's not really an owner. Generally, when I'm dealing with the owner of a business, we're in there, we're looking at insurance, we're looking at the bottom line, and we're doing whatever we can to maximize that. You know, with a public entity, it's a little bit more difficult because we deal with a lot of people involved with it. So, you know, the insurance carrier, Liberty Mutual, offered the renewal. But what we're possibly looking at in the future is if they want to ever get off of this thing, before they get off of it, they're going to talk to us about self-insured retentions. And if that happens, our twenty-five thousand dollar deductible could go to something like a two hundred fifty thousand dollar self-insured retention, which will work a lot like our work comp right now. We're insured, y'all handle the first half a million, then after that, the insurance jumps in. That has worked out very well. Auto in Louisiana is a different animal. Because right now, if we get involved in a bus accident, Liberty Mutual's going to come in, adjust that claim. And if it's fifty thousand dollars, they're going to bill you the twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. With an S I R, you're going to have to hire an adjuster, you're going to have to work that internally, and there's more expense for that. So my goal is to prevent us ever getting there. I have a public entity in this area right now that got moved to the S I R program. They're a fraction the size of this. Their claims, they were having twenty to thirty claims on an auto account that had about fifty autos a year, fifty autos on it. They had twenty to thirty claims a year. Their premium is over two hundred thousand dollars on that account and their S I R is two hundred fifty thousand. And it's going up every year. But they have ten years of bad loss history that we're trying to account for. And they've done a great job getting out of the woods on that thing. So it happens. It happened to an insurer of mine. They were not with me when it happened. They called me after the fact that they had hooted out of a program. And I told them I could find it for them, but it's going to be expensive. The way that we did that, we got loss control training involved. They assessed everything. We did common sense things. We made every employee sign a note texting policy that was in place already and we started talking about it. And when we started talking about it, we created that safety culture again. And that way, when people get in a situation when they're down the road or something, they'll think twice about turning around. Or they won't even turn down the road if there's no way for them to get out. And if I'm not mistaken, I think next month, there's something on the agenda for y'all to vote on about buses not going down maybe a one-way or a certain.
You're gonna, you're gonna, we talked about this a little bit after the last meeting last time. One of the things that backup accidents, because we have a lot of backup accidents, and the state law addresses buses backing up, right? Help me make sure I get it right. It's in Title twenty-eight. And Title twenty-eight is one of the titles that governs us. And we shouldn't be going down roads. We can't turn around them. And we do quite a bit of that to pick up kids down that road. So what we should be doing is have those parents meet us at the end of the road. Our buses shouldn't be going down a road. They have to back up. If I am not mistaken, every claim we have this year, we go Um, if I am not mistaken, every claim we have this year, we go away except to, you know, we have a lot of claims.
Good job, Mr. Trent and Mr. Ray for staying on topic.
But, but, you're going to look at, and this is, I put all this in your newsletter, so you can take a look at this, because this is, these are big implications, we're changing major practices here. So y'all will have to take a look at that next month.
We talked about the house-to-house pickup before, I mean, people don't do that.
Well, we're, we're going to ask you next month to, um, approve us not going down roads, we have to back up to get out of us.
Yeah, and I, and you may hear from your constituents, but it's, it's literally the law. So if there's a reason why we're, we're doing it, on top of, it's costing us. And right now, this is the cheapest you can get for a while. If we get hit with a $250,000 SIR, self-insured retention, I'm talking major, major, major money potentially. If we have a bad year, there's not to say, you know, which, because if you do, and I insure a lot of public entity, a lot of it, and 100% of the time that we're, any of my public entity is involved in an auto accident, whether we are at fault or not, I get, we get sued every time. They just going to figure it out from there, so we have to avoid it at all costs. We won't be perfect at it, but there's no doubt with the activity that I see going on, we can make a huge difference in it. And if I can go next year, or the year after, whatever it is, I want to be able to show them, when they start to question these claims and underwriter, and I can say, yes, we had that uptick in activity, but look at how much they care, and look at the things that they did. Look at how the school board and the school district responded to that. They did loss control trading, these are the programs we're completing, these are the online stuff that they've done. And, um, you know, if we can address that type of stuff in, in passing, that, that, that agenda next month would be huge for that. So it just creates that culture of safety.
Mr. President, if Mr. Noel is, um, doesn't have anything else to add, I'd like to really make a recommendation to approve the insurance renewal with First Insurance as attached.
And one other thing, I need y'all to approve rejecting uninsured motorists. On the auto, we do that every year, and approve Ms. Mary, uh- To sign. To sign.
Okay, I want to add to my, um, motion to, what is it, uninsured motorists, we're going to deny decline-
We're going to reject them.
We're going to reject uninsured motorists.
Uninsured motorists coverage.
And-
Ms. Mary to sign.
For Ms. Mary Bonnet to, to sign.
Second. Got a motion by Ms. Jill and a second by Mr. Jay. To approve the, uh, the insurance renewal presented by Blake Noel with First Insurance, and to reject uninsured motorists and approve Ms. Mary Bonnet to sign. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Blake.
Thank y'all very much, thank you, appreciate it.
Item number 23, recommendation to approve the Rappids Foundation 2025-2026 grants as attached. A is the Healthy Behavior Grant of $53,400, and B is Effective Schools, Schools Grants for $125,000.
Um, these are grants that we get every year through the Rappids Foundation. The Orchard, um, Foundation is the educational arm of that. We use the Healthy Schools Grant to the Healthy Behavior Grant. Every school has a person that does pieces of this, and that is, there's a variety of, um, programs that we implement. We address vaping, we address healthy behaviors, we address nutrition, those types of things. The other grant we get every year is the Effective Schools Grant, and that is exactly what they are.
Okay, pause it.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the Rappids Foundation 25-26 grants as stated.
Okay, got a motion by Ms. Amy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Key? To approve the recommendation, to approve the Rappids Foundation 2025-2026 grants. A, Healthy Behavior Grant of $53,400, and B, Effective Schools Grant of $125,000. Any discussion or questions?
Who serves now the foundation involves?
Who serves, um, that Rappids family?
Yeah.
I don't know that I'm known. Do, do y'all know who the role of Rappids is for the Rappids?
I'm just curious.
So on the foundation board?
The last one was Dwayne, but he moved, so I don't know.
We can go to the list, we'll see.
Any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion approved. Item number 24, recommendation to approve the board resolution to give authority to Ms. Jenny Welch and Ms. Wendy Marshawn to sign on behalf of the Falls Parish School Board for the Rappids Foundation 2025-2026 grants.
I still move, Mr. President, second.
Got a motion by Ms. Amy and a second by Ms. Jill? To approve the board resolution to give authority to Jenny Welch and Wendy Marshawn to sign on behalf of the Falls Parish School Board for the Rappids Foundation 2025-2026 grants. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 25, request to approve the amendment to the agreement sales tax audit contract with revenue recovery, Ms. Jessica.
So this is our current contract, revenue recovery is the, uh, company we use to outsource all of our sales tax audits. Uh, we don't do those in-house, we're just to solve, so this, um, is from 1992, so we're updating some language to get it a little more current, and we're including, um, a few amendments in there that'll let them, um, handle some of the big refund requests that we get periodically that we can't handle, because they're just too large for us to review the information. And this is for us, and it affects all the municipalities, too, but it's the amendments for the contract.
Mr. President, I still move.
Got a motion by Mr. Robin?
I'll second this.
Two second?
Me, boy.
Second by Ms. Amy? To approve the amendment to the agreement sales tax audit contract with revenue recovery. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank y'all, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Item number 26, recommendation to approve the general fund 2024-2025 budget revision.
Last revision of the year, Thomas. Uh, just wanted to make it up to date and more current. Total revenues, the same, the same report you saw earlier, just the blue column. $44,563,881, total expenditures $44,512,900, with a, uh, estimated surplus of $52,590.
Mr. President, I, uh, move that we approve the general fund budget revision of 24-25.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Ms. Amy and a second by Mr. Robin? To approve the general fund 2024-2025 budget revision? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Recommendation passed, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion by Ms. Jill?
I'll second.
And a second by Ms. Amy? To adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Please, thank y'all.